So we have a quorum present?
Yes.
Okay. The time is now 7:08 PM on Thursday, June 4th, and I call to order this regular meeting of the Perry City Council. Our invocation speaker hasn't come. So let's move to Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody will join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, indivisible, equal to justice for all. Everybody? Devin, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Can everybody hear me on Zoom? Not?
Yes.
Genevieve Cutrell?
Here.
Craig Elliott?
Yeah.
Mindy Galbouby?
Yes.
Adam Grass? Christopher Powell?
Yes.
Terry Wood? Mayor Jane Chuglin?
Here.
All accounted for except council members Adam Grass and Terry Wood.
I find that a quorum is present and council may conduct business. That will move us to approval of the agenda. The clerk and I have prepared the agenda and I believe it has all items of business that need to come before council tonight and I submit it to you for your amendment or your approval.
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Second.
Okay, please anybody correct me if I get a name wrong. I think I heard Craig, moved by Craig, seconded by Cutrell that the agenda be approved as printed.
That's correct.
Is there discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Oh Devin, we have to do roll calls for this, don't we?
That's the only one I missed is reminder, sorry.
I don't have the sheet to track.
Oh, should have been in your packet. Oh, duh. Yeah, I don't, I did not have this time.
Okay, because I gotta make sure I do it in different orders each time. Let me make a real quick list here. Okay, so. Councilwoman Cutrell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Galbouby?
Yes.
Councilman Powell?
Yes.
Councilman Elliott? Councilman Elliott?
Yeah. Hold on.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. All right, that will move us to reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. We have two sets of meetings. Devin, would you please read the minutes of the May 21st regular city council?
I moved that we suspend the rules. I'm sorry, did somebody else?
All you, Mindy.
I moved that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the May 21st, 2020 regular meeting.
Second.
Moved by Galbouby, seconded by Cutrell that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the May 21st, 2020 regular meeting. Is there discussion on those minutes? Hearing none. Councilwoman Galbouby?
Yes.
Councilman Powell?
Yes.
Councilman Elliott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cutrell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Devin, would you please read the minutes from the June 1st special meeting?
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the June 1st, 2020 special meeting.
Second.
Moved by Elliott, seconded by Galbouby that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the June 1st, 2020 special meeting. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, Councilman Powell?
Yes.
Councilman Elliott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cutrell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Galbouby?
Yes.
That will move us to pre-approved reports and presentations. Oh wait, no, I'm jumping ahead there. That will move us to public comment. Does anyone joining us on Zoom from the public like to make a comment to city council? We do have a three-minute time limit on public comment, but I'll ask if anyone who would like to be recognized would raise their hand and we will be ready to hear you.
I didn't see anybody raising their hand yet.
That will move us to communications. Devin, do you have any communications for us tonight?
Not tonight.
That will move us to mayor and department head reports. The only thing I have for council of big significance tonight is the budget and I'll report on that as we get down into the agenda items. So. Devin or Joanne, do you?
Mine is the same, third quarter budget comparison.
Okay.
When we get to it.
Kyle and John are on Zoom with us, do they have any reports they want to make?
John, I don't have anything.
Thank you. Does Kyle have anything or Devin?
Anything else?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Your department had reports then, we'll move to committee reports. Do you want to have our council members have a committee report they'd like to deliver tonight? Hearing no committee report. We'll move to presentation and approval of the bills. Councils have an opportunity to review the bills and we seek your permission to pay them.
I have a question.
Yes.
What is L E O R T C?
Answer that, that is the. So our money comes from the state for officers for training and we turn around and pay that same exact amount to our training consortium twice a year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion or questions on the bills?
No questions.
Motion?
I move that we approve the bills and, wait, I'm sorry, here we go. I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment being authorized.
Second.
Was that Cutrell was the second?
It was.
Very good, thank you. I'm learning your voice as we go. Any further discussion from council?
I was wondering real quick, I was on. Telefriend Incorporated, is that just our city's phone service?
Craig, you went out on the audio, so I did not hear what one you were talking about. Can you say the title again?
Yeah, the Telefriend Incorporated, is that our city phone service?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I.
Hearing no other discussion. Councilman Elliott? Councilman Elliott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cutrell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Galbouby?
Yes.
Councilman Powell?
Yes.
Motion carries. That will move us to old business, discussion about becoming a sanctuary city. Does council want to continue to put this on hold until Councilman Wood returns? We can leave it no action taken. It'll come up on your next agenda.
I agree.
Is there any objection?
No action.
Very good. Then we will move to discussion of possible amendment to council rules and procedures. Councilman Grass advised us at the last regular meeting that this was Mr. Woods as well. Shall we leave this no action taken? Is there any objection from council to doing that?
No objection.
No objection.
There is no action taken and we'll move to new business. Next item there is third quarter budget comparisons. So we have a device that'll, oh, you won't be able to hear them, but they'll be able to hear you.
If they have questions available.
So we'll need a minute to take council questions, but the treasurer is going to present the third quarter budget comparisons.
All right, we have the third quarter budget comparison and if you look at your paperwork, the top column all the way to the right, it should say activity through 3/31/2020. I believe you all have a different version. You actually have the cover sheet for the third quarter budget comparison, but then the meat of the report is actually the budget for next year. What I have for this, I'm not making any recommendations for any approvals, for any changes and we'll have, within two weeks, we'll have to do the fourth quarter budget comparison. So if there's anything that needs to be adjusted, I'll do it at that time. Any questions? I have copies of the corrective report and we'll make sure that Devin gets them to you.
We're going to be sending to council updates on the budget that was presented. There was one thing that changed, so we'll send the third quarter budget comparisons for you to have a look at along with the updated copies of the budget.
Would you like us to come and pick them up in our mailbox? Would that be easier?
We can put them in your mailbox if you would like to do that.
Um, however else, everybody else is going to, I'm, I'll go along with that.
I can do that too.
I can email when they're in your boxes.
That would be awesome Devin, that way we don't have to have a police officer come. But it's cool though, it gives my neighborhood something to talk about.
They should be used to it by now, Chris, you've been serving as councilman for many years.
Joey and they're just gonna, they have just asked tomorrow or next week to make sure they have hard copies in their boxes.
And then once they're in there tonight, I'll email and let them know that. Okay.
I have another question.
Maybe he has a question.
Yes, Mindy, I'm listening.
The paperwork for, um, the sanctuary, or I'm sorry, the amendment to the council rules, um, do we have to have a new copy of that every time?
No, but I find a lot of times things get misplaced and it just, it helps so everybody's on task.
Okay.
If you'd like and there are no objections, we could stop sending it and only send it if requested.
Oh, no, that, I still want hard copies, but when we move it to the next agenda, um, like I, I can, you know, keep.
Sure. I appreciate that. I, but my experience is, is that doesn't always happen. So it's better than somebody say they didn't receive it at all than to get it twice is what my experience is.
I understand that completely.
Okay. Do we need a motion on the third quarter budget comparisons since there's no changes?
Um, according to the charter, Joanne's supposed to present and they're supposed to approve every quarter. So in my opinion, we need a motion of approval.
So we need councils approval, I'll seek a motion.
Um, I move that we accept the third quarter budget comparison as presented.
I'll second. I'll third.
Moved by Cutrell, seconded by Powell, that we approve the third quarter budget comparisons as presented by the treasurer. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Cutrell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Galbouby?
Yes.
Councilman Powell?
Yes.
Councilman Elliott?
Yes.
That will move us to possible approval of repairs to vector truck. John, do you have a report for council regarding this item?
Yes. I was a little late getting the quote in, so you probably don't have it in your packet. It's just on the agenda. We approved some monies for things to do to the vac truck. Uh, it would be, it's, this portion of it's going to be using water, but it's all comes out of motor pool. This is a hydro excavation tool that attaches to it and it would be mounted on the truck so that we can pothole. Basically, this is going to be primarily used for locating service line material type which I'm required to have a full inventory within the next five years. So we have roughly 160 or so spots that we have to dig up and this will make a hole about six, eight inches, maybe, maybe a little bigger on both sides of the curb stop, approve what material type is that is located in the ground for the water service lines.
John, the motion that we have in front of us, they don't have a not to exceed amount. Do you have a dollar amount to give them?
I do. Not, not to exceed $3,978.03.
Three thousand?
Three thousand.
Almost four thousand dollars.
My goodness, I thought it was going to be a lot, lot more. So I, I approve it.
I move that we.
I have the, I don't know how well you can see. It's not a lot of stuff on it, but, um, you know, it uses high-pressure water to cut the ground, have a lot less disturbance and, you know, cleanup to do.
I move that we accept and approve the quote to make repairs to sewer vacuum truck from Jack Dohany Companies for an amount not to exceed $3,978.03.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Elliott, seconded by Councilwoman Cutrell that we accept and approve the quote to make repairs to the sewer vacuum truck from Jack Dohany Companies and for an amount not to exceed $3,978.03. Is there discussion? Hearing none, Councilwoman Galbouby?
Yes.
Councilman Powell?
Yes.
Councilman Elliott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cutrell?
Yes.
That will move us on to employee health insurance. Devin, do you have a report for the council regarding the employee health insurance item?
So what I gave you is the renewal rates from Blue Cross and Blue Shield and, um, our, we have went ahead and did 6% for the budget and it came in at 5.92%. We are requesting that we stay with the same plan and not change and just renew this year. Usually it's done in the process that we have a budget approved and then healthcare. Blue Cross and Blue Shield is a 30-day out to, so that there is no delay in the healthcare service. So I put this in front of you to possibly approve. This will take effect July 1st. This renewal is what our healthcare begins. Does anybody have any questions of what I presented you in your packet?
Um, what was all the differences between gold and silver and?
Current.
And then, and I mean even total members varied.
I don't see the gold and silver, I'm looking to see, to see where you're seeing this.
Um, so like. Four pages back. It says PPO Gold.
Oh, current, current benefits at the top, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And your question is, say that again, please.
That one says, that page says PPO Gold. Then the next page says Simply Blue HSA Gold. Are these like choices you had or?
So we actually currently, to follow along with our personal policy is that our qualified retirees bear as close as possible to city employees until they're 65 at this point. So we have Perry Bradley is a retiree that is on medical and then we have Chuck Munch that is also on medical and they're almost to 65. So Perry is, um, in Michigan and Chuck is not and the PPO that we picked for, um, the city employees to use will not work out of state. This PPO that we switched to last year did significant amount of cuts and the advantage is, is that if you take the time to make sure that you're looking for the tier doctors, you'll get a better rate. But if you choose to not shop around to stay in the circle, you'll have to pay a higher rate. So we really give a lower rate last year. So Mindy, we have more than one plan due to our retirees.
Got it. Here's that up immensely, thank you.
So they break it up and they add it all up together and with all three plans, we came at 5.92%.
Got you. Everyone has been satisfied with the plan?
I have talked to everybody and they said that they are comfortable with the new plan. Yes, that they don't have any arguments with it.
Okay.
I move that we approve employee healthcare plans for the 2021 fiscal year with Blue Cross Blue Shield Physicians Choice Plan and to authorize the clerk to sign the same on behalf of the city.
Second.
Moved by Powell, seconded by Cutrell, that we approve the employees' healthcare plan from 2020, 2021 fiscal year with Blue Cross Blue Shield Physicians Core Plan and authorize the clerk to sign the same on behalf of the city. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Powell?
Yes.
Councilman Elliott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cutrell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Galbouby?
Yes.
Very good. That will move us to the next item on the agenda, which is the proposed 2020, 2021 city budget. So if council would like to pull their budget out, you'll have the details and I'm going to work primarily off of the big summary sheet which shows each of the different funds and then projected changes on each fund as we go through. And I'm going to highlight several things that we put in here for you and then I'm going to ask the treasurer to chime in with any additional items she wants to report on after she's heard everything that I've said. So the first thing I want to let council know is that as we go through this budget process, we take a very conservative approach and it takes some time for us to find out what kind of a headly rollback there's going to be on the property taxes. So we made an estimate and put it in the budget. Our estimate turned out to be low compared to the actual number, but in the copies that were sent to council, we mistakenly left the lower estimated headly in there. We will send you a new corrected budget. This will be the only change in the corrected budget. There is projected to be an additional $11,400 in property taxes for the 2020, 2021 tax year. That will affect the general fund and as a result, the projected revenue for the general fund are expected to be $11,400 higher than the budget you have in front of you. There are several pieces at work within this budget. One of the areas that council is aware of that we've been suffering is wear and tear of the equipment for our yard services, picking up waste and picking up branches. And so in this budget, we have proposed an adjustment to begin rebuilding the motor pool fund from which new equipment will be purchased for that service. We're seeking to set aside $40,000 plus a little bit more and we're proposing to place a special assessment on yard waste. John, do you have some details about that special assessment? As John's doing this.
Looking at the overall, uh, I, we, we went and changed some things back. I believe it was in November or December for yard waste collection and, in that, if you remember, I said we're going to have to make some changes. We've been paying for fuel and, um, wages, but we have not been setting anything aside for the future to replenish this equipment. So in that, in that $40,000, that would cover wages and fuel there. So what we're looking at is like a dollar a week. So $4 a month, I think it would be $48 a year to have those services and at the way they are that we changed them to. Anything else would be much more. And, uh, you know, this, I'm trying to extend the life of this stuff out. So that's basically what I have.
So council will see that we have a $45,692 surplus in the motor pool. That's part of that effort to save money up to maintain and restore those services as we go. But the special assessment will be something that we'll bring before council that would require your approval. It's in the vein of the trash assessment that we all. And with that assessment, that'll allow us to set additional money aside in motor, in motor pool to preserve the service for future.
Does that mean we would be able to go back to the old schedule of, um, taking care of the brush and yard waste? yard waste?
That's the goal over time is we replace equipment, but not immediately.
Okay.
It will take some time to save up enough money to, to replace the equipment and get everything back up and running and make sure that we don't have to cut services further.
Okay.
There's, um, let's see, bust my train of thought here. The, oh, over the years, you guys know that I have been cutting rent payments out of the utility funds into the general fund. Staying with that pattern under the water fund. The water fund rent to the general fund remains $0 this year. And we've cut another $20,000 out of the sewer fund. That's from what it was in the prior year. So there's still a little more to cut in there, but we're still making progress on those proposed budgets. Under the Parks Fund, we've kept available the funds that were set or were budgeted for the Parks Committee or Parks Committee to use. They didn't use them last year, so we're keeping them in the budget anticipating that they might want to use those funds. We've included in the Highway Major and the Highway Local Funds for the projects that John's talked to you guys about doing. And as we've worked through this budget, it's a tough one. We're getting projections for revenue sharing cuts from the state. And we've incorporated those into there. We've tried to take a conservative approach on that, but we don't really know what's coming. So there may be changes we have to deal with down the road. So rather than taking a bigger hack and slash process through the general fund, I propose that we take advantage of the rainy day fund that we put aside in the 2018, 2019 budget. And we had a surplus of $83,637 put into that balance. We used some of that in the last year primarily for work on the McQueen House. And I'm proposing to use, once the property taxes are corrected, approximately $42,000 of that rainy day fund to sustain services at the city. We've gone through and we've slashed this thing in as many ways as we can. It's something we're going to have to keep an eye on because we may be forced in the future if the economy doesn't pick up and sales tax revenue and revenue sharing don't return to make much harder choices. But I've avoided making cuts to the employees at this time because we have this reserve available. Joanne, do you have anything you want to add to the report?
No, I think you have it covered.
I think those are the big things. So I'll open it up for questions or comments from council.
Does this mean that we don't have special meetings to go over the budget together?
That's correct. Because of the COVID situation and because we're quickly running out of time, the department heads and I got together and did the budget. I would have liked to do those special meetings, but these Zoom meetings can be very difficult. Communicate a lot of detailed information. While I think that's been a fantastic process in the past to have council involved with this COVID crisis and the time crunch, I needed to get this budget done. And so we did it the old school way. The department heads and I put it together. I hope in future years that the next mayor will continue to do those special meetings. And in that is my hope that this crisis will pass and we'll get back to normal.
So on the McQueen House. Um, the capital outlay is zero. So that
We paid out of the 2019, 2020 budget for all the things that they requested.
So that means there's nothing set aside for any future repairs? Like, like how do you, how do we, like in the future, they need a new rough? For example. Um, are we able to set aside a little bit of money each year to accumulate? So when that time comes, there's money there for things like that?
That can be something that council can consider budget year by budget year. This year, with all the cuts we were doing and the projected reduction in the general fund and a lack of any requests that we haven't already met from the McQueen House, I didn't, I didn't see it as a good idea to put that savings in this year. I didn't see other less important things that I could cut from the city budget. But this will be a year by year kind of thing. And if the economy picks up and the revenue sharing returns, you guys may have more money to deal with and be able to
I can't hear anything. Is anybody talking right now?
I hear you now, Chris.
Okay, okay. Really quick, James, um, another gun. I'll think of it. I'll think of what I was going to ask.
Kennedy wanted to speak.
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you, Mayor, and working with the treasurer and the city staff for putting together the budget. I know you guys had to do it under extraordinary circumstances and get it to us for approval. And I'm, I'm really grateful that you all were dedicated and were be able to pull this off in this strange pandemic time. So thank you very much.
Thank you. My special thanks to the staff that who came in and did the work to help me get this accomplished.
Chris, did you want to speak again?
Yeah, I, I'm wondering if John has went ahead and purchased those doggy poop bags, the dispensers?
No, we had no intention of purchasing those until, we are waiting to see if the grant comes or.
Okay. Oh, that, that, that's right. That's right. That's right. Okay, thank you. That's all I had for now.
Thank you. Other questions, other comments? Okay, procedurally, the budget that'll be in your boxes will be the official budget that I presented with the additional property tax revenue and the one that I will look to bring before you at the June 18th council meeting. We'll have to set a public hearing for that meeting regarding the budget. And then at that meeting, I will seek approval of council of the proposed budget. If members have any questions between now and that time, please don't hesitate to call myself and the treasurer. And we will get you whatever information you need and try to give you answers to your questions and discuss what you, what you want us to think about. Also, I want to advise council that my original plans, I was going to be gone on the June 18th meeting. I have changed my plans at this point. I find it difficult to present a budget to you guys and walk away before you move on. So I will be here for the June 18th meeting and available at that time when you guys take this up.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any idea when we will be allowed to come back into the chambers altogether? Even if
Well, with the change of the governor's orders and what we set up tonight, council members can come now provided that we wear face coverings and we social distance six feet apart. I think the planning commission on Monday night gave an excellent demonstration of how they effectively did that. Not everybody sat up here at the table, but they spread out, they wore their masks. And, and they were in here and had a very effective meeting. We've got the technology set up. We were hoping to have some of the council members in here with us tonight. But when you're ready to come back, if that's on the 18th, you can absolutely do that. If you were sitting up here at the table with me, Chris, I'd keep my face mask on because of how close we'd be.
Okay.
You have your own face mask. But when you guys are ready, my position is, it's gone all along, I treat you guys like adults. When you're ready to come back, you get to come back. But I'm not going to drag any one of you out of your house demanding that you come back before you feel safe.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Question on that. So if, if you're only allowed to have 10 people together inside, if we had more people come attend a meeting, and we would have to turn people away. So how do you do that and still have it be open to the public?
Well, these things are all subject to the Open Meeting Act and public access is one of the sacred things of our state. I think for the planning commission meeting, I didn't sit there and count, but I think they got over 10. But they all wore their masks. They act, they practiced very good social distancing. And that's how they kept us safe. That would be my intention. Although honestly, we're not getting a lot of people coming in here to the House chambers right now. The meeting's available by Zoom so that people have an altar.
Yeah, as I say, we also Zoom still.
So we wouldn't run into that.
Yeah, and the, the current executive order limiting to 10 or under goes till June 12th. And the next executive order will probably be gatherings of 100 or less. So
Inside?
Yeah, well, anywhere, yeah, 100 or less. So it's likely we'll change after the 12th. And council can resume getting back together.
I'm ready.
Remember, that's a big pavilion we have there in the park.
That's a great idea, Chris. I love having a meeting out there.
Do we need anything special from council to change the location of the meeting, Devin?
I might have to publish that the location has changed because, but I don't think so because it's still in the city. It's still at 203 West Polly Street.
Would all of you feel more comfortable if we moved out to the veterans' pavilion for the next meeting?
I'd be happier to be outside.
Ditto.
I'd be happier to be inside personally. The Eos love me too much.
Do you want me to bring you some bug spray?
Nah, I'd just rather be inside.
All right. Well, I don't have any reason to object to using the pavilion, but I'd like to get a situation where council's all comfortable with what we're doing.
That's okay. It's something we can discuss maybe the next meeting.
Certainly. We'll see where the executive orders and the COVID crisis is at that time. That may inform our decisions somewhat. Anything else budget related from council?
Do we need a motion to set the public hearing?
Yeah.
We do. That's our next item of new business. So if council has no more questions related to the budget, we'll move on to set public hearing regarding city millage rate and budget approval. And I'll seek council's approval or motion from council first.
I move that we set a public hearing for Thursday, June 18th, 2020 at 7:15 PM in the council chambers at Perry City Hall on the 2021, 2020, 2021 city budget and on the city's tax millage rate for the same fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Powell, seconded by Catrelle, that we set a public hearing for Thursday. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm the good-looking one.
Moved by Powell, seconded by Elliott, that we set a public hearing for Thursday, June 18th, 2020 at 7:15 PM in council chambers at Perry City Hall for the 2020, 2021 city budget and on the city's tax millage rate for the same fiscal year. Did I mix you guys all up? Was it Elliott who moved?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. So moved by Elliott. Who was our second? Was it Catrelle?
Catrelle.
Okay, I apologize. It's easier when I see you guys. So the motion is correct. It moved by Elliott, seconded by Catrelle. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Elliott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Catrelle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Galbey?
Yes.
Councilman Powell?
Yes.
Very good. That will move us to the last item of new business, which is the possible, well, it says approval, but I don't think I would say approval. I would say possible acceptance of the resignations of Jean Holly. I'll open the floor up for council.
I move that we accept the resignation of Jean Holly as the city's representative on the Board of Review and Local Officers Compensation Committee with regret.
Second.
Moved by Elliott, seconded by Catrelle, that we accept the resignation of Jean Holly as the city's representative on the Board of Review and Local Officers Compensation Committee with regret. Is there any discussion?
She will be missed.
I agree.
Yeah. She's been here forever.
Any other discussion? And I'll call the vote. Councilwoman Catrelle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Galbey?
Yes.
Councilman Powell?
Yes.
Councilman Elliott?
Yes.
Motion carries. That'll move us to any other business that may come before council. This is our second opportunity for public comment. I have no one here in council chambers from the public, but we did have, last I looked, some members in the public with us on Zoom. If anyone from Zoom would like to be heard, three minutes are available for us to listen to you. Would anyone like to be heard this time? Is anyone raising their hand, Devin?
Yes, I am.
Oh, I'm sorry. There you go.
How's everybody tonight? They, given the evolving situation with the COVID status changing, and I've talked to a couple of the council members about this topic, and hopefully it will get some further discussion when I'm done yet this evening. The citywide garage sale, as everyone's aware, has been canceled from its traditional time in, earlier in May because of the COVID situation. I would like council to consider reestablishing that yet this summer, preferably by the latter part of July, since it is something that's kind of become a tradition here within Perry. I took it upon myself as a citizen to actually put together a little survey and distribute it to all of the participants from last year's garage sale by participants, those that actually were on the city map and, and were sellers, if you will. I got about a 50% return from that survey. And of that, the vast majority were certainly in favor of still holding a citywide garage sale this summer. My second question was, would they be willing to enforce or guide social distancing and, and wearing masks as sellers and encouraging any attendees to also wear masks? So I would hope that, that we can see it clear to potentially still hold this event and would ask the council this evening to have some discussion on that topic before they close business this evening. With a preference being that if they are willing to take it up, I would recommend a timeframe of the last weekend in July, giving time for some city help and this point, I didn't see anything on the city calendar posted that would be in conflict with that, that window of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to be recognized at this time? Okay, that'll conclude public comment. Do council members have any other items of business? Do council members have any other items of business that they'd like to take up tonight?
Yes, I do, Jen.
Councilman Elliott?
All right. First off, I have a couple of different things. First off, I will go ahead and jump off of Larry there, and would like to have the opportunity to see the garage sale go forward, the Perry Citywide Garage Sale, for the same reasons he suggested. I was gonna be a little bit broader. I know he had talked about the end of July for various reasons, but I was thinking also a couple, two other dates, possible dates, so the one weekend would be like July 31st through August 2nd, which is the last weekend of July. The next one would be August 7th through the 9th, which is the following week. And then a third possibility may be doing it the same weekend as Perry Fest, which would be September the, I think it's the 18th through the 20th, and as a way to make, where that, kind of like we do at the citywide cleanup, is to combine these things to promote the city and have an opportunity for getting people back into Perry and hopefully give our businesses and residents an opportunity to get people back into the community and see us and get us going again and make sure that we're still on the map and being recognized by others in the surrounding area. So if if it's possible to get that, I talked to some of the ladies, was hoping to get some more information from Dory and not try to do something without all the information, and maybe there's more information.
Craig, we're losing you.
You're muted, Craig.
There we go, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I was hoping that maybe through, that we could get the idea of getting the garage sale back on the city calendar would be a possibility for us if it wasn't too difficult with obviously an understanding of our current circumstances.
Craig, I like the idea of having it during Perry Fest. What does everybody else think about that?
I suggest you guys have some conversations and get some advice from Dory regarding that. I think her thoughts on that process would be worth hearing as you consider the decision.
Understood.
I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but you might want to see what kind of effects it will have. That'd be my suggestion.
Fine.
Can we put it on next agenda? Can we put it on next agenda?
Council certainly can put items of business on the next agenda.
And no. And Dory can have.
Make sure to do that.
So Craig, are you going to do the follow-up with Dory?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay.
So, one second here. All right, next, the second thing I wanted to bring up was something we had talked about some time ago, and wanted to throw this out and see what the other council members thought about it. A while back, we had talked about the desire that if the house, brick house by the railroad tracks ever came up for sale, that the city would like to purchase it. I know it's up for sale, and I just wanted to throw that by the other members to see if they had remembered or if they were still interested and thought that was an idea. But I also know that according, I mean, current, our current situation and financial situation with the city could be concerning for looking at doing something like that. But I wanted just to mention it to the council and some thinking on the idea of what, if that would be a possibility.
Hey Craig, can you tell me what the intention was before to purchase it by the city?
Yes, the the desire was to pare it down and to create a entrance into the park area through, right off of the M52 there, and hopefully, you know, put like a little parking lot and stuff in there that would make better access to the park on this side of the railroad tracks was the idea.
And the closest exposure to the public, because city hall heights?
Yeah. Yeah. How much is it, how much is it going for?
I want to say, it's not unfortunately that cheap. As I say, it's like they're looking for 100,000 at the moment, which is significant. Yeah.
Jiminy. Jiminy Cricket, that's a lot.
Yeah. So I I know that, I I saw that and went, wow, but I also knew that we had talked about it before and missed it the last time, so I was wondering, I just wanted to bring it up and make sure if it was something that we wanted to still keep in mind.
I I think that'd be a great discussion for the next meeting, and hopefully Councilman Wood and Councilman Grass will be there, and we could discuss it then.
Sure. Sounds good to me.
Yeah, thanks for bringing it up, Craig. That's a great idea.
The, so if we could, James, if we could get, maybe get that on as new business for the next meeting and, or old business or whatever, and see if we could get, talk about it possibly, or at least see what could be done.
Yep, well, remind us when we make the list at the end.
Okay. And then the third thing I wanted to bring up was, in lieu of our past city council decision, as we look at the future and what's going on with the governor, is to take the time to revisit the opening of City Hall and looking at the hard work that Devin and the other ladies have done in the office there with putting together plans and procedures that comply with what the state is talking about. I would like to, at this moment, make a motion to reopen City Hall with their policies and procedures in place and enforced, as was previously mentioned, and with allowing for those who desire to still stay at home to have the option to continue to work from home as they have been doing, but to open up City Hall and begin to steadily get back to functioning in compliance with the state's requirements for doing so.
I think that's.
I'm sorry.
That's a great idea, Craig.
Yes.
It's worth a discussion.
Well, I think everything aligns at this point.
Okay, I I had a motion from Mr. Elliott, so let's see if we can clear that up and then we can have the discussion. So I was sitting here trying to write it out, Craig, and I want you to help me get it so it is what you want. I had motion by Elliott to reopen Perry City Hall in accordance with the procedures presented to council, and then there was some more.
Along with the, remaining with the option for certain employees to stay at home if they choose for health concerns and stuff at this time.
So, and allowing employees to work remotely at their option when possible. Does that capture it?
Correct.
Is there anything else in there?
I I had talked about enforcement, dealing with the, the police are willing to enforce, but I don't know if you want to put that in there or not.
Um, it's your motion, I would say.
I don't know if there's, I don't know the language that would be needed or if it's needed or not.
Certainly, my position is if we have safety procedures in force here at City Hall, that we would expect to enforce those procedures adopted by council.
Correct.
So the the police would certainly act on that. So if those procedures require a mask and someone comes in refusing to wear a mask, we're going to comply with the procedures passed by council. It's kind of fits with my philosophy of a store. If I walk up to a store and the people who own the store have made a decision, they say, you don't walk in here without a mask, it's their store. If I want to walk in there, I better put a mask on. So council, this is quite the same as private property, but council can set those procedures. We're certainly, as we have done, going to follow those procedures set by council if we do.
Can we have in that motion somewhere where you're stating, when you're opening City Hall, and I'm hoping that you'll consider Monday, just to get all the details done and to report it to the public?
Devin, I'm willing to do whatever you want us to do, so if that's what you would like, that's for sure.
I'm very comfortable with doing it on Monday, but asking us to do it tomorrow, I think we would, it it wouldn't be a smooth transition, but we've got everything to go. We would just be doing the work prior to Monday to get it out there.
If you'd need more than Monday, would Monday suffice, or do you need a few more days even beyond that?
I've been trying to read you guys' minds, so I've had the girls help me think of anything out of the box, look at what we have, what needs to be taken down, what's going to need to be reposted, informed, and all that kind of stuff. So I believe between yesterday, today, and tomorrow, we'll be ready to go. Everything will be done for Monday.
Oh, open Monday then?
Okay, so let me read what I've got, Craig, and if I've got anything wrong, I'll correct it, and then we can have a discussion on your motion. Motion by Elliott to reopen Perry City Hall in accordance with the procedures presented to council and allowing employees to work.
Remotely.
Employees to work remotely at their option when possible, effective Monday, June 8th, at 8:00 AM. Did I capture what you were intending?
Yes. That sound good with Devin?
Makes sense to me. It follows everything that our governor's already passed down, in my opinion.
Okay, so we need a second to open up discussion.
Second.
Is that Cottrell?
It is.
Okay. Motion by Elliott, seconded by Cottrell, as I just read, floor is open for discussion. Hearing no discussion then?
I've got a question for Devin.
Go ahead, Chris.
Devin, is there any, like comparing three months ago's utility bills or last year's utility bills compared to this year's because of the the COVID-19, but are we saving any money in the city as as far as utilities? And I know that's not a lot of savings, but that's, it's, and it's just something I'm curious about.
You know, I, that doesn't come to my desk and not to truly report on that. I don't know if John is still with us. He might know how we're averaging on that. I would have to get with Dory and see if there's any savings on the utilities part, unless you're just talking in the building itself, because we've been closed down, but you also have our police department available, so things are still running in DBW, we're still running also.
Okay.
I don't remember how much savings we really did get out of it.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we'll go to the vote. Councilwoman Galbavy?
Yes.
Councilman Powell?
Yes.
Councilman Elliott?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Cottrell?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Any other items of business that council members want to bring up before the meeting? Hearing nothing else, do council members have any items of discussion or observation that they want to bring up? Hearing none, let's move to items for the next agenda. We will have discussion about becoming a sanctuary city. Devin, can we relabel that so it's clear to what it is? Discussion about becoming a Second Amendment sanctuary city? That way the public knows what it is we're going to talk about.
Say that again, discussion.
Could you change that old business item title to discussion about becoming a Second Amendment sanctuary? I think that'll give a more clear understanding for members of the public, looking at our agenda, what the subject is. Okay? Discussion regarding possible amendment to council rules and procedures. Public hearing, the city millage and budget approval. Craig, you wanted some discussion regarding possibly setting a date for yard sales?
Yeah.
You had another one, I think.
The discussion of the brick house by the railroad.
Discussion of possible purchase of, of a brick house on Main Street. We'll probably work on that a little bit. Joanne had her hand up.
Fourth quarter budget comparison.
Fourth, fourth quarter budget comparisons. Anything else? Okay. Oh, I, I do see, I have a note here, one thing that I am supposed to do, I'm supposed to make a statement for the public to hear regarding the proposed millage rate. Our 2019, 2020 millage rate for the city was 13.3874 mils. After the Headley Rollback, the proposed budget, or the proposed millage rate for the city of Perry for the 2020, 2021 year is 13.2990. I've made that public statement as I'm supposed to. While I was talking, did anybody else think of additional items for the next agenda? Anything comes up between now and the meeting on June 18th that we didn't discuss that council needs to get on the agenda, please contact the clerk, and the clerk and I will work to make sure council has all items of business necessary to come before you at your next meeting. With that, the time is now 8:15 PM, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your work.
Thank you.
Everybody, have a great weekend, everybody.
You too, Chris.
Thank you, you too.